Okay, we're going to call our special meeting to order at 6:01. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy. Mr. Quaglioano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Okay. Quorum, okay, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you. We're on the public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, if we have, sir. Sorry, you don't have to call me sir. I don't warrant that kind of respect, so. Okay, we will move on to item four, which is going to be the oath of office for our newest board member, Rashawn Walker. If you could come stand and state the oath for us.
Okay. I'm used to it. I, Rashawn Walker, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of School District 158 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public hearing, I'm sorry, at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the rights to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Excellent. Congratulations. We'll give you a second to gather your belongings there. Take your time. Take your time. While you're doing that, we'll just take a second here. Our next item is the appointment of Rashawn to various committees we have on the board. So Rashawn is going to, with everyone's approval here, is going to go to the Community Relations, the Human Resources, the Legislative Committee, and Policy Committee. So somehow you've obtained the four committees well ahead of all of us here, right? We're all threesies, so good job. All right, do we have, we have, I don't know that we have to, we have to vote on this? Okay, so this, so I'll make a motion then that Rashawn be appointed to these committees. Again, it's the Community Relations, the Human Resources, the Legislative, and the Policy Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll give Mr. Gentry the second, and let's go with just a roll call, just because I want to hear everybody's name.
Mr. Quaglioano.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck. Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Garin.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Okay, that passes. You're on those four committees. Item six is the Building Committee. We have a couple of change orders. Six dot one is the change order number two to contract with Weather Guard Roofing. Mr. Rinkazik, do you have any comments on that?
I'd like to, think I explained it in the memo.
Yes, you did.
Pretty well. I'd be happy to answer any questions of the board. The projects are substantially complete right now. This is just tightening up a loose end.
Okay, no problem. Any discussion on this matter? There's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve change order number two, the contract with Weather Guard Roofing in the amount of $4,704 even.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gentry. Can I have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Garin.
Yes.
Mr. Troy. Mr. Quaglioano.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Okay, now you need to add Mrs. Walker.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes. Okay. Very good. Congratulations on your first vote. Okay. We'll move on. That passes. Item six dot two is change order number three, the contract with Abbey Paving. Again, Mr. Rinkazik, any comments regarding it? It's probably the easiest.
This is the easiest change order yet.
In the history.
Some design review, value engineering with our engineering team and the contractor. We determined that we didn't need to take the alternate bid, which we did accept in the original board approval, so we wanted to rescind that to be a credit to the district of $75,000.
Okay, that sounds like a good deal. Any discussion?
Just a question, what exactly are we, I guess, the reasons why? I guess a little more background.
What, as you may remember, we've had some challenges with our tennis courts in the last few years, and so I've had pretty close conversations with an engineer when we were looking at that, and it just so happened, we learned through that process of evaluating that asphalt, that one of the problems with asphalt and why it cracks, maybe excessively, is its recycled material content. And actually tennis courts, if you're a premium tennis court, you actually use fresh liquid asphalt and not recycled liquid asphalt. It's very common in the industry. In fact, IDOT allows up to 5% of recycled asphalt to be used. In fact, IDOT allows recycled shingles, and we no longer do because that's the main root of our problem, we believe, was on the tennis courts. But I asked for them to entertain the idea of the virgin liquid asphalt in this large project and how much it would cost, just to see what the value was. What became a problem, as we learned in further discussion, was asphalt pavement construction in Illinois is typically always based on the Illinois Department of Transportation standards. It's like the Bible. And they do not have a recognized mixed design for virgin asphalt. So this opened up the idea that we could be exposed to having problems because it's an unknown. The contractor counter offered another mix that he's had a lot of success with and he knows others have had a lot of success with, so our geotechnical engineer looked at some old installations from two years old. It's a mix called the, quote, Elgin Mix. Orange Crush has a plant down in Elgin, and it does not have recycled asphalt. It has the limitations on recycled material, I'm sorry, it does have a little bit of recycled asphalt. It's not virgin. It has no recycled shingles. And it's performed very well in places it's been observed, so we were willing to go to that because it's a recognized, there's a recognized mixed design for it.
So we're kind of breaking new ground originally and paying more for it, and this was an alternative that came about seemingly with the same results that are expected.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else with any questions? If not, I'll make a motion to accept change order number three to the contract with Abbey Paving in the amount of $75,000 credit.
Second.
Second by Ms. Melendi. Roll call.
Mr. Troy.
What's his name?
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglioano.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Garin.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Okay, motion passes. We're on item seven, which is to go into closed session, so I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session at 6:10, as indicated in the agenda, as stated in the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gentry. Can I have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Garin.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglioano.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Okay, it passes. We will move into closed session.[726.43]
Okay, we're resuming back from closed session at 6:38. Can I have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Guerin.
Here.
Mr. Troy. Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Not here. Okay, we're back in open session. Item 10 is our HR personnel report. Do we have any further discussion on that?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, if not, I'd like to make a motion to approve the HR personnel report that is presented Do we have a roll call on that?
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Okay, we've already done the pledge of allegiance, so we'll be on to item 3, which is public comment. Do we have any public comment for this session? Okay, no public comment. We will move to item 4, which is the Human Resource Committee. Mr. Gentry.
Yes, we have one item, item 4 dot 1, Human Resource Updates. Fairly self-explanatory, anything to highlight, Mr. Zier?
Yeah, just something to highlight, usually we're bringing insurance rates, new insurance rates this time of year that's going to be delayed because if you recall, we have moved our open enrollment back to early November. So we've adjusted all of our resets for January 1 now. So the rates will be coming a little bit later in the fall here for the board to vote on, but that's something you usually see in August as we get ready for an August open enrollment. But open enrollment's in November, so there's a little bit more time to get those rates prepared. And hiring, as usual, with a couple weeks out before the arrival of students, principals continuing and assistant principals, pretty much everybody, I don't want to leave anyone out, working very hard to get the building staffed.
I'm assuming there's some sort of special enrollment for new employees, correct?
Yeah, the new employees that come onboard through the orientation process, there is a health insurance component of that, and they're given information to enroll at that time.
Okay.
Before we conclude with the HR portion of the call, I'd like to introduce Sarah Burnett, our new assistant principal at Chesapeake, who was just approved at the last special meeting. So welcome, Sarah, we're excited to have you as a part of our team.
Thank you.
I think it is worth noting that Sarah's, we did an activity at our training that we had yesterday, and I'm a big Seinfeld fan, so I like to ask people in interviews, what's your, who isn't exactly, Tony, this is why we get along, what's your favorite television show? And Sarah's was Huntley 158 Today.
She did a lot of binge-watching to prepare for her interviews and is now eagerly awaiting
her opportunity to be invited on Huntley 158 Today, so.
She's at the top of the list.
That's the best answer I've ever.
And we wonder why our viewership keeps going up. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, so did you move that forward here, HR?
Uh, yes, I did, not yet, but.
It was informational, it's just informational, yeah. Okay, all right, we will move on to item 5, which is Legislative Committee. Mr. Fleck's not here. I personally don't have any legislative updates. Does anybody else have anything of note or substance?
Any legislative?
Anybody who's a legislative-type person that might be in this, no, there's nothing going on. Springfield's quiet, nothing going on. So we will just move forward to item 6, which is 6 dot 1, which is our 18, 19 strategic plan. Dr. Roll.
All right, so it's that time of year for us to set our strategic planning measures. Mr. Armstrong has it displayed, and maybe you can enlarge that just a little bit, Dan, for the viewing pleasure of our audience. So I want to start by just sharing how collaborative this experience was at our retreat. The majority of our time together last week as a cabinet on Wednesday, and then as a principal group and cabinet on Thursday centered around preparing our measures for the strategic plan. And as you know, the strategic plan was built by a very collaborative member of about 50, a very collaborative group of about 50 community members, teachers, administrators, and board members, a handful of years ago to guide the district forward. And each year, we set these measures to live within those goals and those indicators and adjust them each year so that way we have measurable goals to hold ourselves accountable to that progress. So I want to highlight some of the specific changes and the big items, and then hope to have a discussion and seek consensus at our meeting that we're on track and our goals are meeting the board's approval, to be approved at the regular meeting in August. One of the big things that I want to start by pointing out is a shift that we're proposing to make with our student growth data. You know, we'd like to fully adopt ECR's student growth model, which would slightly change how we will report out that student growth. ECR's growth model consists of, that target is consistently at 84 percent. And we have to really break our thought processes down from thinking about 84 percent as we used to with AYP and No Child Left Behind. Eighty-four percent is not a moving target. If we hit 84 percent, we will not be shooting for 85 percent the following year. The way ECR's growth model works is 84 percent of our students are, should be on target for meeting their projected growth in that ECR model, meaning that 16 percent of our student body are making low growth, meaning they're not meeting their growth potential based on their past performance and all other factors that are taken into account to kind of personalize their growth process. Sixty-eight percent of those students are, should be meeting their expected growth. And then another 16 percent of those students are exceeding that projected growth. So the high growth and expected growth are what make up that 84 percent. Each year, that, what those growth targets that they're expected to meet will adjust. So for every student, their growth point will change, yet 84 percent is still that target measure. But it's not a stagnant measure, if that makes sense. Help me, Mrs. Schlitzer, if I'm not hitting that explanation accurately.
No, you're doing good. I guess I would just add that it's a, so when they use, it's a regression model, it's a predictive model, and so when they set the projected growth through the predictive model, it's a pretty rigorous growth set point. So when Dr. Rose says, and he's absolutely right, that in the model, it's not that, it's not that we expect 16 percent of our students to make low growth rather than expected growth, but it's that the model is built with a rigorous projection such that if 84 percent make expected or high growth, we are very much on track to keep progressing as a district, and then we focus on those low-growth students individually to help bring them up. So it's because the model, it's a live model each year, so it keeps recalibrating.
Yes, recalibrates.
Mm-hmm, and so if we were to have 85 percent of our students this year make expected or high growth, they would actually raise the projection even further for the following year, and 84 would still be the set point that would be expected based on how they built the prediction.
So if I were to take a shot at saying it back to you, if my index was 100 and my target was 110, I made 115, the subsequent year is going to be relatively speaking five basis points, or five points higher.
Exactly.
Then, I got you.
Exactly, and so the thing that's nice about the model, and you know, we've talked about this a little bit before as we've made the choice, I think it was about three years ago that we stopped just using, about four years ago maybe, a straight MAP measure, and we started using the growth model. What's great about it is that it's based on every student's individual past history. So I have my, as a student, I would have my own growth projection. Dr. Buzinski would have his own growth projection, every single student in the district, those are put together to make the district's growth projection. And why that's important is that if I'm a student that has a demographic indicator that's in the past caused me to make lower growth, that's my projection. So any demographic issue that sometimes districts will say, oh, well, but that's this subgroup or that's that subgroup, it's built into the model because that student had that same demographic profile last year when the projection was set. If I'm a student that's been making high growth, I'm a student that would then continue to be expected to exceed that high growth, that would be my individual projection, and then the district projection is set based on really about 9,600 individual projections together.
So I get the idea of like you raise, kind of raise your own bar as you do better and better. Does it work in reverse where you, in effect, lower your bar if you underachieve?
It potentially could. I wouldn't necessarily call it lowering the bar as much as saying that if there are factors that are causing a group of students or an individual student to not make their growth, their projection doesn't just keep staying static so they get further and further behind their growth. In the model, in the statistical model, it would project their growth accounting for whatever, if I struggled last year, let's just say I had health problems and my MAP scores were a little bit low, my growth projection might be just a little bit lower next year than it would have been if my MAP scores had been high. So in that sense, it jumps the student forward, but it does account for some of those things that would have caused lower growth in the prior years.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So it would be safe to say that it would be a good identifier if the student was predominantly doing well, and then all of a sudden, they're starting to decrease that particular year, you'd be able to notice that and we could make some adjustments to help them get back to where they need to be.
Absolutely, and in the model, so we use this model for our improvement, for our RTI, for our school improvement plans, you know, regardless of whether the strategic plan is based on it. But the great thing about it is exactly what you just said, because we will sometimes see some trends. We'll see an individual student, that's at the school level, at the district level, you know, we might work with a principal, say, ooh, that grade level, maybe their growth was just a little higher than we thought it would be, let's see what we're doing in that grade level. So we can isolate groups, but also individual students to focus on what's going well, but also if we start to see it tailing off a little bit, it would be able to be a good flag. In fact, they use colors, so it's like, you know, very obvious, so it's blue if it's high growth, it's green if it's projected, it's yellow if it's slightly under, and it's red if it's a concern. And so it really, really pops to identify that.
What's really beneficial and why this is important to us is it's accounting for our K-12 growth as an entire district. So what you'll notice is that we would no longer be reporting out individually on SAT or elementary literacy. It's K-12 reading, K-12 math, allowing, you know, some of the things that we've began, we're really seeing is, in the last handful of years where we've really been focusing our curricular efforts on aligning the instruction to the common core at a more intense level, our park scores are in the blue. We had a tremendous year of growth with our park scores, and we're not always seeing that with just our MAP scores. In fact, ECR is reporting out that our MAP scores are kind of all over the place and hard to, hard to break down, and we don't have a good explanation as to why. And incorporating this type of growth, we feel is going to give us a better snapshot and projection for district-wide growth for us to focus on.
Okay.
It would also actually incorporate preschool as well, so the all-in model is the pre-K through 12, and that's something that we haven't been able to do when it was cut off right there after MAP, because a preschool doesn't take MAP.
We'll, of course, still report out on SAT progress, just not as a strategic planning component.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as I go on, I have plenty to share, but as I go on, please stop me if you have concerns or redirection.
One question on that, like if you have, and I know this isn't the case, but just hypothetically, if everyone is understandard, you'd still have that 84 metric to move forward against, but you would still be kind of net-net under, you know, under like an SAT standard?
Absolutely. If we don't hit that 84 percent, it will show that we did not meet that 84 percent benchmark of what we were shooting for, for all students. And it would, you know, the model would recalibrate, and 84 would still be our goal.
Right.
It just would be a slightly different grouping of projected growth. But you'll definitely see a very clear picture of if we met our goal or not. It'll be very easy to determine.
Right, I'm just trying to think, if you're extremely substandard and you're setting the goal to move everyone up, you're still kind of substandard, even though you're improving, you're still below target.
I see what you're saying.
How do you account for, how do you think about accounting for that?
So one thing, actually, and so the goal for the measure in the strategic plan is not written using this really to keep it a little bit less complex for public reporting, but what we also monitor, so that's our growth, so are we, together as a district, making expected growth, high growth? We also monitor what's called status or the proficiency benchmark. So at the same time, as they can tell if I'm making my growth, they can also say, did Erica meet the traditional meets and exceeds benchmark that we're all used to thinking about? So we monitor that as well, what percent of students are meeting and exceeding, just like we always did, and what percent of students are growing. And so while that's not in the measure, that's also a point that we monitor, which I think might also drive a little bit at some of the accountability pieces you're asking to keep our eye on that.
Yeah, and that's not going, that's not going away, you're just saying fundamentally, wherever we are, we want to go higher.
Exactly, and something that I really like about combining the growth measure with the accountability, I think you can make a pretty credible argument that if we just focus on what percent of students meet the benchmark and we only want to raise that, you actually end up sometimes with some equity problems in districts because I can raise that percentage by focusing on a very narrow group of kids who are right here, and I am not trying to raise the bottom students because they might not have a chance to reach the benchmark, or the top students are already over it. So in a way, it sort of keeps us focused on what's right, which is we need to keep progressing as a district, and we need to focus on all kids and their growth. So that balance, I think, is something that we're real comfortable with.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, then the other, the other change here is we'd like to begin using ECR's projected growth model for our subgroup students, our LAP students and our IEP students. And what, what ECR does here is they take all of that data that we know about these students, and they make a growth projection based on their limited English proficiency or their learning disability. And hitting that growth projection and focusing on that is a better way for us to truly measure their growth versus saying we're going to increase IEP reading performance by 4 percent, which may not really even be possible. But their projected growth personalizes it and allows us, similar to how we just described the 84 percentile with the, with the total student growth, but it tailors it more towards the projected path that they're on based on past performance and all of the factors that make them a subgroup. We believe it's, again, a more equitable way of serving those students. If you have anything you want to add to that, Dr. Schlitzer?
So that measure actually is a proficiency measure, that benchmark I was talking about, that what percent meeting and exceeding the benchmark. So for those subgroup goals, we're actually using that. And what's, this is the first year that ECR has projected in this way, but what they've essentially said is if we are the subgroup, let's say all of us sitting here, they look at what percentage of us met the benchmark last year, and they make a projection based on our growth that they've projected as to what percentage should meet it this year if we're making our growth. And so we're going to see it written as a meets or exceeds of a benchmark for those groups. So it kind of drives to what Mr. Gentry was talking about, is with our subgroups, we're keeping the accountability on that moving forward and meeting a benchmark, that continuous improvement, and in the overall goals, we're looking at student growth.
The reason that you, if you look at measures 1.3 and 1.4, you see that there's not a target listed there and it says blank. And that is because we have to upload our rosters into the ecosystem and allow them to make the projection. That won't be able to be done until all of our students are placed in classes, so we expect to be able to have a hard target with a number for you at the regular board meeting in two weeks. All right, you'll also notice in this area, we added an indicator, changed the indicator, added an indicator to subgroup, to group our, for our dual-language program measure that we felt was an important one to have to implement that and help develop it, but also our LAP and IEP is an educational equity and inclusion indicator to guide, in guiding our principals in decision-making and curriculum and instruction. I just wanted to point that out, that we believe that was in the direction that we're trying to work, a lot of the efforts that we're placing in our area of curriculum instruction. And then another important one, we'll, you'll reflect back to the interview process where I shared that I did not believe that having a timestamp on our path to personalization was a realistic, a realistic thing. So the old, the old indicator had, we would be there in five years. So we simply changed that to the district will move toward a personalized learning system, because it's going to take longer than five years, and it's one, it's a system that there will be many iterations of, that we will continue to evolve. And within that indicator, you know, we are committing ourselves to the Vanguard vision, which is our competency-based education pilot, and monitoring and evaluating that program for scale so that we can move on into year two and beyond. We have a number of reviews that'll be taking place this year, and some of the specific verbiage that I want to point out is really where we get to some of the other things that we discussed, you know, in the vision that I share with you for the future of the district, in terms of aligning our instruction to standards and closely aligning that instruction to standards in preparation and laying the groundwork for that personalized learning environment. And each of those reviews are directly tied to that progress in the instruction and planning being very closely related to the standards in which they should be constructed on to make that shift to personalization an easier one. Any questions on goal 1? All right, if we shift over to goal 2. Goal 2, there's quite a bit of adjustment, especially in the indicators, it's our learning environment. We adjusted indicators and added a social-emotional learning indicator where we will do a multi-year review with staff exploration and needs assessment based on our social-emotional learning program that we need to develop and build. And we're going to conduct that much like a curriculum review because we do have standards, state standards that we can build our program off of. Item number 1, we believe that it's time for another comprehensive school safety review. Mr. Dean will lead us in that to, we did one, we conducted a school safety review a number of years ago where we investigated the physical plant, and that was the addition of the buzzers in the elementary schools, the high school expansion where we added the secure entrance. I'm going to ask Mr. Dean to conduct a school safety audit of our processes and procedures within the buildings in terms of our drills and just daily conduct, and then also the physical plant so we can have an idea as to other improvements now three years removed from that last audit, to make sure we're still in line with best practice. We adjusted the indicator, number 3, increasing staff understanding and appreciation of restorative practices. You'll remember that last year we had an indicator, or had a measure that we will train all administrators on restorative practices. We had that training in early July, or late June. And then just this, just last week, this week, we conducted our first training with staff, voluntary training with staff that filled within 24 hours where any staff member could join. They emerged from the training with the exact same response as our administrators did, that this is one of the best trainings they've ever attended and are looking forward to trying it out. So we felt that the next logical step would be for us to evaluate their understanding and how that practices have impacted their classroom. We didn't feel as though there could be a measure on impact on students just as yet, but we want to measure staff perception and understanding of how restorative practices can improve their classroom environment as well as just the school community. And then the fourth indicator here, enhancing approaches to educational equity in our school district. And this is where, you know, we now have part of Dr. Del Castillo's responsibilities in the district is our director of curriculum, but one of the, part of her roles is our equity officer. And she's going to conduct and lead some principals and other staff members in an evaluation of current practices and then develop an action plan to improve equitable practice throughout the district to make sure that if there are any particular problem areas that we are, they are rooted out, and we have a plan as to how we're going to improve. And then also, the first of three superintendent advisory committees that I'm very excited about, and this first one will be a superintendent advisory to create an avenue for students in grades 6 through 12 to share directly with me what their experience is like. This was something that I did as a principal that I found extremely valuable, and connecting, you know, the superintendency with, directly with our students is something that I think can be extremely beneficial and give them a voice.
So how are you going to choose those students?
I don't know yet. It'll be voluntary, it won't be, it'll be some voluntary way, but I don't have a clear plan as to how that'll be done yet. We'll work with the principals to determine the best course of action to get a well-represented group from all facets of each of the schools.
Yeah.
We'd be sure, we want to definitely have students from every corner of the building so that our district is well-represented and their voice is heard. Any questions from goal 2? All right, we move on to goal 3. This is our HR goal and quality staff. Not a ton of changes here, but one of the specific ones is we want to increase our recruitment efforts for a diverse staff across the district. The district is going to offer professional development opportunities for staff as a follow-up to a strategic measure from last year where we developed, kind of, our teachers evaluated themselves and gave a placeholder as to where they felt they were on the personalized learning continuum. So we felt it was important for us to have a follow-up measure and take an action step to provide some professional development directly related to where our buildings are in terms of progressing on that continuum. The district has been doing a lot of work, Mr. Zier and Dr. Schlitzer, with a wonderful committee of teachers and administrators who've put a lot of hard work in the summer on Huntley University, but that's not the biggest hurdle. The biggest hurdle is to implement the concept of Huntley University, which will allow micro credentialing to be taking place within district, allowing our teachers to get targeted, in some cases personalized, professional development to their needs in terms of where they are in their career, and allow them to then credential themselves within district and move on the salary scale that's only reflected in our school district. So not only is it developing our staff, but it'll also go a long way in terms of retaining our staff and rewarding them for their work and credits that are only available in our school district, yes. And then the second of the superintendent advisory committees will set up a committee with staff, and this again will be targeted to, we hit not a, not a union-focused advisory, but a teacher, voluntary teacher advisory. Union members are of course, obviously, welcome to attend, but it'll represent all aspects of the district as well, so that way I have a direct line with our teachers, which is something that's, again, very important to me in terms of the relationship that exists there. Any questions from goal 3?
Just a quick question on 3.1. From a metric standpoint, is there, I guess, what hits my mind as I look at that, is there a way to get some sort of quantifiable target or guidance or, and we're really, just philosophically, we wouldn't want to do that on number, like the actual hiring, but I think the slate of candidates, you can kind of put a, you know, some sort of hard metric on it potentially?
Possibly could, but I think it's, I think it's important that we're focused on the best quality person for the hire.
Right.
And I don't have a good answer as to how we could put a specific number in terms of we will see, because we never know what that applicant pool looks like until they apply. Some of the efforts that we, you know, that I know Mr. Zier worked very closely on was reaching out to some of the historically black colleges and universities to let them know of our openings. I think we have an increased presence on LinkedIn, we can take another step with some of our HR approaches on Twitter, just getting our positions out. Our district is extremely desirable from potential employee standpoint. It's a matter of how can we recruit in terms of allowing a more diverse group of candidates know that our jobs are there.
Right.
You know, and from that, that I think our actions will speak for themselves. We can certainly investigate if there's a metric that others are using that we're simply not aware of that can be done and done in a positive manner.
I mean, I've seen it done, I've seen it done in terms of measuring the diversity of the slate, but to your point, if you don't get the interest, I don't know how many tools you really got to deal with that, but to your point, some of these, making sure the net's cast wide enough to make sure it's well-communicated.
I think, to me, I know Mr. Zier, you have a different thought, but to me, that logically is the best. is the best first step for us is to increase our advertising efforts in some of the areas that we have not been successful in the past.
And that's connected back to our goal there last year where we created that recruiting plan. So, we've got some additions into that so where we can cast the net a little bit wider.
Okay.
Not really a question, but a comment. I think it's one thing to cast the net wider and to solicit outside and try to get more diversity and inclusion into the district, but it's a whole, it's a different thing to actually make sure that the person or the people that are applying know that we're a welcoming district and that we really are not just looking, we're not interested only in the numbers, but we're interested in helping them move forward in their careers and in diversifying our community as a whole. So, I think that might help if that makes sense as far as the quantifying measure. So, I don't know that we want to really put quantifiers on there, but we kind of want to make sure that when we cast that net out wide, that we also follow up with some, if there is some interest from the applicants, to follow up and let them know that, you know, oh, we're great, great, we're glad to have you, please apply, please come on in. And I mean, again, if they're not the best candidate, we don't want to sub our candidate just because of their ethnicity, but we do want to make sure that they understand that we're not just saying we want you here, we really want you here.
Any other questions or comments on goal three? All right, moving on to goal four, partnerships with the home and community. This is where we'll, the third and final superintendent advisory committee where we'll establish a committee of parents and allow me to meet directly with some parents so that they, we can, I can present issues that are forthcoming within the district and as well as hear what they're seeing and their impressions that may provide a lens that we don't currently have. So, again, we'll work out the process in terms of how people can come on and off that committee, but it will not be one that is highly selective. It'll be, it'll be open. We've talked about measure number 4.2 for a number of years and we finally just took a leap on this. This, we've seen increased need in terms of educating our parents on issues their students are facing. Some of the ones that, you know, we've tried in our middle schools in particular have done an excellent job of this in the last number of years of bringing parents in for drug and alcohol types of education events. And I think because we haven't had great participation in the physical attendance, it's been a deterrent for us. And so, I think what we, we're going to challenge ourselves to find different ways of reaching our parents, continuing to invite them in, but maybe recording some of the events that we have, blasting them out or making them available in an archive on our website. So, that way they still have access to the important content because we realize, like us, everyone's schedule is tight and extremely busy. You know, at the high school, some of the, and creeping into the middle school, vaping is a huge issue and just because of, you know, my wife's occupation, I am very close to knowing what the negative outcomes are going to be for that issue. And people don't understand, it's not just flavored liquid. It's chemicals that make it that flavor and you're inhaling chemicals into your body. We need to educate our families about that because it's going to be a national epidemic in a handful of years with the health outputs that that's going to cause. It's just one example. We have some academic education that we can certainly impose on what is personalized learning, what is the Vanguard Vision, what is our elementary literacy series, that we can do more to connect our parents' understanding what's happening in the classroom as well as then what can I do at home to better support, support my student. I know I've banged my head against the table as a dad trying to help his third grader with this new style of math that my, certainly did not learn when I was in school. We had multiplication tables and we don't do it that way anymore. So, and I know I'm not alone. And a lot of parents have that same issue. So, I think that we're going to commit to taking that step to creating those learning opportunities so our parents can be partners. We have an increased, high school pathways has been something on our list for a long time. We've been, our academies are fantastic. We have two new academies that'll begin this year. And we want to increase the volunteer opportunities for our community members to be involved in both those academies as well as some of the other career and technical education opportunities that we believe that are there. Mr. Armstrong has intentions of working on updating the website. It was a number of years ago. We switched over to a new and improved platform that is working very well for us. However, there are always areas that can be improved, especially in terms of navigation and ease of, on the user's end that we're going to be focusing on. Any questions on goal number four? All right, all right. And then moving on to goal number five, not a lot changed here. A lot of the points in goal number five are maintaining bond ratings and recognition status. You know, we did implement, we have a lot of energy-saving efforts taking place. You know, the solar initiative hit Facebook today. I, Mr. Armstrong and I had interviews with the Northwest Herald and the Daily Herald this afternoon, looping them in on our efforts there. So, you know, solar is going to be a big one, but we, you know, we're committed to energy-saving efforts with Mr. Brinkowski's leadership for the past decade in terms of guiding us to seven buildings already with an energy star rating. We're looking to continue that. He's spoken many a time about the LED lighting transformation that he perceives coming in the coming years and we're, you know, we're committed to that. But then also, we felt it was important to put it as a strategic measure to financially support the Vanguard Vision at the high school as our first step into kind of the extreme personalized learning opportunity and initiative that we're going to put it in writing, that we're going to support that so we can ensure that it scales and is successful. So, that way we can learn from it, properly learn from it, learn from the mistakes they make and tweak and potentially figure out how it could, aspects of that could guide us in our personalized learning journey district-wide. Any questions on goal five or the finances or any other of the strategic planning measures? Concerns about moving that forward?
I have no concerns, but anybody have any general comments?
Just very well thought out. I think when I read it through the first time, it was not entirely clear, but I think the concepts here embrace a lot of the things we've talked about. And I think it, I think the roadmap's set to where it will capture all the right things.
Thank you.
Anyone else on comments? Okay, so what I would propose is that we move it forward to the board for approval, but we would not have it on consent because you're missing two items that need to be inserted. So, we'll, if everybody's good with that, we'll move it forward to the board off of consent agenda. Okay? So, everybody's in agreement with that? That's fine. So, now we are on to item seven, which is curriculum and instruction. Mr. Garen?
Thank you. Number seven dot one, the college board contract. Dr. Schlicker?
Thank you. This is actually a familiar-looking contract. We did one just at this time last year. The great news is this one looks a little different because it's about half the price. The state has committed to the SAT suite of assessments. So, not only have they signed a contract with the college board for SAT, so at least we know what our juniors will be taking for the next few years. They actually have an option to extend it out through 10 years, which is fantastic. I'm hoping that that happens so we have some stability. They're also going to be covering the cost, as you see in the memo, of two of the SAT suite of assessments there. We still would be offering two on our own. That's our choice. It would be the eighth grade PSAT and then the addition of the NMSQT for our juniors in the fall, which is what would contribute to their being considered for National Merit Scholar status. So, we want to definitely continue that. So, we would just be asking to take this forward to the board for approval and signature of the contract so that we can get those underway.
Okay, any questions or concerns about sending it to the board meeting? And I'll recommend that's what we do and move on to.
Finance.
Finance.
That would be me. All right, item eight, that one, our payables. We have our purchase order and press checks, accounts payable and disbursements. Mr. Gentry, you have any concerns about moving those forms?
No concerns here.
No concerns from me. We'll move that forward to the board. Item eight, that too, is revenue expenditures report. Mr. Altmeier, your comments?
Thank you. Well, in front of you, you have a detailed listing of the revenue and expenditures report, but not the executive summary because we're in the middle of planning for an audit. The audit is actually scheduled to start on Monday. So, knock on wood that the team arrives because Debbie and her team are fully prepared and have done a great job preparing for the audit. That being said, we still have to finalize some accruals and finalize the revenue tax levy and a few other things based on receipts that have come in through July 31st. The district will be, you know, tracking with budget and favorable to budget. And I do want to bring the board up to speed. We, tax receipts, right? We always recognize tax receipts through July 31st. And this past year with the tax situation, with people prepaying their taxes, we're still trying to quantify that, but it is safe to say a lot of people prepaid their taxes.
It is very safe.
Because typically, we receive 52% of our tax levy by July 31st. And every year, you know, we monitor that percentage and typically for the last several years, it's been at 52.5, 52.6%. Well, this year it's at 55%. And that difference represents about $1.6 million. So, if we recognize an additional $1.6 million into the FY18 financial results, well, we're going to be very favorable.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to be working with the auditor to see if there is a way, from an evidence standpoint, to say, hmm, this is not going to happen again in the future.
Well, it's deferred revenue. Can't we, it should be booked as.
Take it as a deposit.
Well, it's deferred revenue.
From a consistency policy standpoint, we've always recognized all receipts through July 31st. There was one year, though.
No, right. The rationale would have been because it was consistently at that level, but you have a outlier year of goofy tax policy that has created this, you know, bubble in receipts.
And so, I'll be working with the auditor, see if we can defer that and recognize the 52.5, 52.6% so that we can kind of normalize our FY18 budget and kind of set us up to keep our FY19 budget that you saw last week in kind of good financial position.
Right.
So, I just wanted to let the board be aware of that, but I will be working with the auditor next week as well as the county to see if we can actually quantify prepayments they received in November and December last year.
Yeah, okay.
So, other than that, no additional update for the revenue and expenditure reports.
Okay. Pretty easy this month, Mr. Altmeier. Okay, we'll move on to, unless there's any other questions about that area. I was going to just move on to eight dot three, the monthly fiscal reports. And again, it's Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you. Only one item to really report during the month, met with our financial advisor and underwriter to continue our debt restructuring phase-in plan. We do have debt approaching that is actually eligible for refunding in October, our 2010 series debt, approximately $6.1 million. Actually, $6.9 million, I apologize. And we are looking to definitely move forward in today's economic climate with interest rates rising. We are definitely looking forward to move that forward. Both PMA, our financial advisor and underwriter with Piper Jaffray will be here in September to walk the board through that opportunity and to continue to move that forward. We are looking and hoping to do a closing on that debt and continue that restructuring phase-in plan by the end of October.
Right.
So, it's slightly aggressive, but they usually are when we do these. So, and to keep that momentum going, we actually have a rating call scheduled here for the end of September. And I did want to make the board aware of that because normally, we have the board approve the restructuring. We do the rating, we do the closing, we get the pricing, excuse me, we get the pricing and then we do the closing. But I think in this circumstances, because of the timing and because of the rates have been increasing and we're pretty certain that they're going to be increasing, we don't want to be chasing rates down the line. We know we're going to be going through this restructuring. So, I am very comfortable with going ahead and doing that rating review. The other thing I wanted to mention is we had long discussions with our financial advisors and underwriter about the rating company. So, for the last five, six years, we have always used Standard and Poor's and we've been double A rated. And every year, our financials improve and every year I sell it really hard that I want a double A plus. I want to improve our ratings so we could decrease the cost to the district, improve our interest rate with these refundings. And we're just not getting there. But we feel that with Moody's and their rating scale, we may have a chance to improve that rating by a notch and in doing so would improve our, obviously, our interest rate and reduce cost on our future refunding. So, with this rating call, it's actually not going to be a call. They're going to come out and do a visit, which is great. We've got a lot to show them here at District 158. We're going to be with Moody's. So, also wanted to make the board aware of that.
How much do you think that's worth as far as the next step up in rating?
You know, I've asked that question. I think it's 10 basis points, but I may be wrong. I actually have that question out there to both Piper Jaffray from a pricing standpoint as of recently as well as PMA.
Okay.
But I'm guessing it's about 10 basis points, maybe 15.
Okay. No small change?
No.
No.
How do other districts, I don't even know how to ask the question. How many districts are Moody's districts versus S and P districts? How does that, because I'm curious, you know, do other districts shift this as well in this same kind of an effort? Or are they in a boat where it's not really worthwhile to go ahead and make a shift like that in an effort to increase that rating?
Well, there's always a risk in shifting ratings agencies because they could come back with a lower rating. Now, we understand the rating scale and how they measure, especially educational institutions, on that rating scale. And so, PMA, Piper, myself, we did some financial analysis to say where would, based on the rating scale, where would we fall? And we're actually between a double A and a double A1, which is one notch above. So, knowing that, we feel very comfortable that we're at least going to get the double A and we don't have that risk. So, to your question, other districts may not go through that process because A, they just.
They may not be on the borderline there.
Yeah, and they may not be on the borderline. They may not be able to guarantee that they're going to get that bump.
Okay.
And so, why go through that unless you're hoping or you're pretty close to getting over the hurdle to get that next notch?
Sure.
With Standard and Poor's, they already told us, they're not budget. We would have to probably increase our fund balance by another $10 million and that's several years out.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So, good question.
Okay, so it's fine on that. Do you have anything else on your updates?
No, just preparing for year-end audit, solar contract where we are.
Okay.
Just a quick question on the Moody's subject. Is that incremental cost or is it just swapping one for the other?
Swapping one for the other.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I, my question is on our budget and, I mean, we usually pass our budget in September. So, we got to have it on public display 30 days prior to that.
Correct, that's going on display tomorrow.
It is.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Altmeier, really to do his fiscal update? No? If not, then we have our activity funds report. Any questions, concerns on the activity report?
None here.
None here. That's fine. So, we'll move on to item nine, building and grounds. Mr. Troy?
Thank you. Number nine, or item nine dot one, O and M updates. Mr. Brinkowski, anything to bring to our attention?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Excuse me. Good news, our 10-year health and safety survey work is officially completed in writing from our architect. I will be removing that from the agenda. It's been a long time coming. Two solar projects, things are moving along quite well. We are starting, commencing meetings with the villages of Elgonquin and Huntley who want to have special use permit review process, which is going to include public hearings, things like that. First meeting presentation at Elgonquin is on August 13th, the evening of August 13th, followed by an 828 COW. It'll be an agenda item and a 9-4 board meeting is what the plan is. At Huntley, there'll be a conceptual design review on. At Huntley, there'll be a conceptual design review on August 9th for special use permit review. A public hearing on August 25th and village board meeting on September 13th. Reed Road campus seems to be in a much simpler process. They already have an ordinance in place for solar installations. And we met with their team and they suggested that we needed to present them information, come to a meeting. Gave us a few options in the month of August, and Forefront is working on developing some information for a brief presentation to their board. And it's our understanding from the village planning team that if there is no concerns raised by the board at that presentation, that it will be simply just a matter of a village administrative review process. The transition for our new custodial contractor, ABM, they've now been in place for 31 days. And it's going very well. I'd like to think that with the measurements we've taken of some of their performance in our summer clean, I've actually noticed a bit of improvement. The staff seem to be, that are working, seem to be more enlisted and happy, which is important. Construction projects, major projects, the roofing project at Heinemann has been substantially complete for a couple of weeks. We've been having a hard time getting the team together to do a punchless review, but it's going to happen tomorrow morning. So Mark, if you're looking for me, I'll be on the roof at Heinemann tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I would love to see if any of the board would want to do a field trip and check out the new roofing at Heinemann or Marlowe because it is actually pretty impressive, the new roofing material we're using. We'll tie you up if we have to.
I just want to warn you, if you do go, bring sunglasses because it's very bright up there.
Okay. I won't be.
There are two pictures in the back of the O and M updates, as a matter of fact. There are two pictures, the last two pages.
It's pretty impressive.
Marlowe is substantially complete as of tomorrow, according to the contractor's projection in this week's construction staff meeting. And we've scheduled punchless inspection for next Wednesday. The shingled roof at Conley should be substantially complete tomorrow, punchless Tuesday. Shingled roof replacement at McCaven is scheduled for Monday. That's been substantially complete for a few days. Pavement improvements, Cheswick and Martin. Very big project, and I'm happy to say we'll get it done before school starts. The last bit of asphalt pavement actually got laid yesterday. There's striping going on, signs installed, landscaping going on, some ripper upgrading around the perimeters and things. We're not really done. And there needs to be traffic on there. We need to let the construction people finish their work. We've got to let the materials cure before we go bouncing off it and putting substantial loads on them. We've informed Cheswick that they could park now on the south side of Reed Road when they come to work in the bus lot. And the following, by the following Monday, if we can hold off till our first day, first staff, our first institute day on August 13th, we should have, it might be sooner, but at the worst case scenario, if there are some rain days, August 13th, the main lots will be open and fully completed. We're punch listing that. We're going to do an early punch, hoping that everything's done, but in case it isn't, we'll just come back on August 8th. Give them a few days to actually do some follow-up work on any concerns that we have. Attached to the O and M updates, there are some allowance reconciliation updates for you on the Weather Guard roofing and the Melkor roofing contracts. We are tracking okay on those. I'm very happy that we agreed that it would be a good idea to replace the shingled roofs at McCaven and Conley because we did have a lot of bad plywood up their deck, which means we've had some water infiltration through the shingles. It was time. We picked the right time to replace them. There are a couple of pictures back there, probably better to see electronically on your, about, of the Marlowe roof on the white coating, and you can see some of the old black coating in the background. But like Mark said, we'd love to take you for a tour.
Can you hook some solar wires to that and generate some power from there?
Actually, no, actually, it'd be, I will tell you that I might have said this once before, a couple of years ago, when we did the first one of these kinds of restorative roof coating systems. It's not only a roofing project that I feel is very good financially for the district because the first cost, we won't repeat that when it reaches the end of life. We're going to, it's only going to cost us about 25% to restart for the second 20-year life and the third 20-year life. And, you know, who knows by then, technology will change, but it's very good. But the other thing is I happened to have my infrared gun in my hand when I was on the roof at.
Don't we all?
Marlowe. Because I wanted to know, when I stood in a hot summer day on the black roof, rubber roofs that we have in most of our buildings, what's the temperature of that surface versus the temperature of this white-coated new surface? And it's about a 70-degree difference. And what happens is the heat is reflected off of the roof, and it's in your face. If you want to get a good suntan, we should start signing people up with the fall protection.
What was the difference? What were the readings?
It was like 180 versus 110 on a really hot summer day. 70 degrees difference. So we are not gaining as much heat in the building anymore either. It's reflecting right off the roof. If you don't wear sunglasses up there, your eyes hurt. Because it's just reflecting all that, those sun rays, right back off the surface. We don't dry up like it rained really hard Sunday night and Monday. We were walking on one, and I'm like, where all this water come from? It didn't evaporate. I'm sorry, we were up there Tuesday afternoon, and it was still there from Sunday night. Because the heat's reflecting off so much, it's not taking the water, it's not making the water evaporate. And that, and water doesn't hurt that roof's coating. It's install. So it's a wonderful thing we've done. We'll notice improvements in our energy star ratings, I'm sure.
So it's kind of like staring at white snow in the winter time. You get that blinding effect.
Yes, but you don't, yeah, from the eyeball standpoint, yeah.
So you're recommending that the future is so bright, people should wear shades?
Yes. Yes, I do like that song, Paul.
You know, I'd like to add, if I could, you know, we, Mr. Minkosik and his team took on a enormous, enormous list of projects to accomplish in one summer. And not only did we get very, very lucky that it didn't rain as much as was originally projected in July, but a lot of the fact that these projects are coming to fruition on time are because of Doug and his and his attention to detail and the companies and, I mean, there were many nights where I would drive by Cheswick and Martin at 7:00, 7:30, and I would see them still working or on a Sunday, still getting things done. So picked a great group of people to partner within this project, and thank you, Doug, for your leadership on this summer project list.
Thank you, Scott. I wouldn't be remiss if I don't say that there are many other little projects going on. Scott knows about several of them very well, that were very, very challenging little projects that our internal maintenance team took on and did very well. And it's been a very complex summer from that perspective. We've done a lot of little things here and there, too, that we've got a really good team. We're very fortunate here.
I did have one question about the new custodial team that's coming in. How much rollover was there from the previous staff of people that were familiar with our buildings who moved over to the new company?
I got some good news to share. Thank you for that. Initially, 32 out of 53 or so, okay? But word has gotten out, this company's a good company. People are coming back.
Thank you. Any other questions on the O and M reports or O and M updates? Okay. Item nine dot two, change order number one for Ridding, I'm sorry, Rutherford Roofing?
This is a reconciliation of the allowance that was in their bid. We had some infrared scans done right before we started construction, had an idea where we were going to find wet spots. And so what we did expend out of our allowances is not a surprise. It's a net credit to the district because we actually replaced a little less insulation board than we anticipated.
Okay, any questions from the committee or the board on this? Any objection with moving this forward? Did not expect any on that. So we'll move that forward to the board for consent. Item nine dot three, summer O and M deferred maintenance project report.
Thank you for allowing me to bring this to the board one month earlier than last year, which, because what we recognize this, for this summer's work is, on our roofing projects, we had really good companies. And one of the reasons was we were out early last year. And we got good competitive prices, we got good contractors. And we wanted to make sure that that happened. The asphalt project was a little more complicated and didn't get out so quick, but we really were fortunate to find a good partner. But I don't want us to put us in that precarious situation again. So I do know that contractors I've surveyed have no problem looking at contracts going out to bid in the fall for their book of work for the following summer. So I wanted to give us a little bit earlier head start for next summer's work. And so I looked again, as we look and manage the facilities and see how they're aging. This living document gets tweaked quite, you know, every year. And we've done a little bit of that again. It's got a new look. If you look at page three, this categorical summary for you has been sorted by the financial impact. And no surprise, our number one investment, if we want to preserve these facilities, at this point, we've already made a large investment in roofing, and that's going to start to tail off in the near future, is asphalt. That was one that's going to stay a little, stay a little bit out there. We've got, we want to keep these places up to looking, looking to a certain status that we like. And you'll see down the list, there are the other ones which are the bigger investments. But asphalt and roofing are top of the list. And, you know, carpet, we are, we are getting to the end of life on carpet. And actually, we've gone well beyond the end of life of some of the older buildings carpets on, because we're doing a good job of taking care of it. But traditional wear on the carpet, we've gone well beyond that, and it's showing signs of it, and I'd like to continue that process. If you turn to page nine, you will see by year, the investment. And a couple of things I like to look at when I look at the summary page on the tenure look is for the, for the district to understand what it's going to take to invest in this, maintain these facilities to to a standard that we like to have of quality. Over 10 years, we need to look at an expense for about 30 million, so it's about 3 million a year. That's a target that can be a financial tool. And if you notice, after FY '22, it starts to tail off. And there's a couple of reasons for that. And we can, we can look to possibly adjust that. Like I said, this is a living document, so we may look, '22 is a big year, so maybe we can stand to spread some of that out to years after. Or maybe, maybe we want to just get it over with and then soften the load substantially in the next six or seven years. A couple of reasons are, we're on a cycle. Most of our buildings were built very rapidly in a short period of years. And building materials that we're looking at investing in have certain life cycles, and we're addressing them. And then we're going to be off to a different life cycle. Most of the things we're replacing don't have the same life cycle. We're not putting a 15-year roof back on. We're putting a 20-year roof, or in the case of shingles, a 30-year roof, where we had a 15-year shingle before. We're doing asphalt replacement where we're doing full-depth reclamation of the base, so we don't have to replace the base next time. We just grind off the surface and replace it. We're doing a lot of things so that in the future, when we have to restore them again, it's going to cost us less. And you can see then this report is paying off. I summarized for you on page one, the particular projects, the particular bigger ticket items on the project list for that coming year. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. On page 10, I actually sorted again by dollars, each particular area. It's by total dollars of investment for your review. And at this time, I'd like to answer any questions that you might have. But we'd like to get consultants going on the larger ones bulleted on page one, unless there's any concerns expressed by the board about that.
Any questions from committee of two or the board? Thank you again for this lengthy, arduous report.
Yes, detailed.
Lots of good detail here. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know that I have any. Doug has always do quite a comprehensive job with this. Again, it's like anything, we'll see when you get those couple of big years. $7 million's a lot of money in a year for budget-wise, you know, so. But that's part of, you know, we do have our replacement reserve in place. So, you know, those decisions will be made at that time. And that's why it's wise to be able to smooth out some of this stuff over time and have that reserve in place in case this stuff has to get done sooner than later, so.
All right. If there's no other questions, thank you again for their report. I don't think there's anything to, or do we need to approve this?
No, I was just wanting some feedback. It'll be a formal approved item when we bring the board bids for approval, whenever that time comes.
He's looking for those bullet point items on the first page if he can kind of start talking to people, right?
To consultants about getting going on the designs.
I don't have a problem with that.
There'll be some professional technical service.
Yeah, we'll ultimately get presentations and stuff at a future board meeting.
No. I don't have an issue with that. I think it's good to get out there in front of this.
Yeah, and right now, these items are in line with the FY 19 budget, so.
Okay. Okay, from a committee standpoint, that should give you some direction then. We're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
That brings building and grounds to a close.
With bringing building and grounds to a close, that brings us to, we're going to go back into closed session. So I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session at 7:44 PM. Second from Mr. Troy. Roll call.
Mrs. Walker. Mr. Flick. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi. Mr. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglioano.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to closed session.